...floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
Now called order, please rise for singing of our national anthem.
Bayang magigil, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng kuso sa dipdip mo'y buhay. Lupang hinirang, buyan ka ng magigil. Sa manlulupi, kitapas isinil. Sa lalat at puntok sa simoy at sa lakitong pagka. Tayilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng wata at moyta, bumay narapilipin. Ang pituming na paraw niya kayla, pangmay magidiling. Lupa ng maraw ng war, aming pagsikat. Uyay labi sa dipdip ko. Aming ligaya napak may mahapin. At lamatay ng daring sayo.
Please remain standing for the invocation to be led by Representative Florida Rida P. Robes of the Lone District of San Jose del Monte.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Loving and gracious heavenly Father, we acknowledge your holy presence today. First, we would like to thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for your infinite source of peace, love, and wisdom. We know that your Holy Spirit guides us and directs us. We are deeply humbled that you have placed us in this vital position and be the vessels of public service. We are very grateful for allowing us to be involved in selfless and useful work, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities in spite of the various challenges that we are facing in our society today. May we remain steadfast as we start another week of session. We pray for your spiritual guidance and direction. May you open your hearts and minds to fully grasp what we will discuss and deliberate today, always lead us into the greater good of our country. We ask you, Father, to continue to bless us as we do our work and all our undertakings for the rest of the session's days. Before ending this prayer, I would also like to take this time to greet our dear speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, a very blessed happy birthday. For we are fortunate to have a leader who has selfless and ardent dedication for public service. We also ask dear Lord for continued wonderful blessings, prosperous year, and good health for our dear speaker on this special day and the days ahead. May his day be filled with love and happiness with his family and people he deeply cherish. All of this, we live and pray for Jesus, in Jesus' name, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Before I will suspend our session, I'd like to invite the honorable members, my dear colleagues, to join our honorable speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes and our First Lady Luisa Raneta Marcos, who is our guest speaker for the opening ceremony of Kabuhayan 2023 at the North Lobby. Session suspended. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? The Chair is now... The Secretary General is now directed to read the call. Members of the...
Roll call of members. Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Aco, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Ataidi, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascom, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondo, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalaw, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Co Pilar, Co Juango Jaime Eduardo Marc, Co Juango Marc, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalo, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Veneza, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Kalin, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavip, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Faríneas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galayos, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo Chan, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garín, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Marc, Goles, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga Ara, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Laxonoel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon San, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Maniquis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernández, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercador Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongtuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Pinaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisas Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Riencia, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Diol, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Iolohio, Rodríguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulum, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suárez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambuntin, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Huatco, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Tianco, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupaz, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unavia. Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villiaferte Luis Raymond, Villiaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiaraza Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Chrystantel, Yap Christoferson, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jazel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 257 members responded to the call.
With 257 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of the courtroom. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up admin matters.
Is there any objection? The Chair's motion is approved. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to elect the following members of various committees as follows: To the Committee on Rules as deputy-majority leader: Di Faustino Ino A; Vice: Albano Antonio Tony Petti. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Special Committee on Creative Industries as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Special Committee on Nuclear Energy as member: Kagas Don Chase E.F. To the Committee on Public Information as vice chairpersons: Emano Evgeny Vicente B; Arenas Maria Rachel J; Del Mar Rachel Margarita B. To the Committee on Public Works and Highways as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Senior Citizens as member: Perderra Dale B. To the Committee on Social Services as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Tourism as vice chairperson: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Welfare and Children as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Health as vice chairperson: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education as vice chairperson: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy as vice chairpersons: Yu Divina Grace C; Rodriguez Rufus B; Amatong Adrian Michael A; Benitez Jose Francisco B. To the Committee on Labor and Employment as member: Yu Jazel Victoria C. To the Committee on Poverty alleviation as member: Suwan Lorden G. To the Committee on Agriculture and Food as member: Yap Christoferson M. To the Committee on Corporatives Development as member: Yap Christoferson M. To the Committee on Disaster Resilience as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Energy as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Ethics and Privileges as member: Roque Larni Lavín. To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization as member: Mariano Hernandez Ruth. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection for the election of the following members? The Chair is done. The motion is approved. Congratulations. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a minute.
Sessions resume. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer approval of the journal.
Is there any objection? The Chair is done. The journal is now approved. Deferred, deferred.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed to the Reference of Business and that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills resolutions for first reading as well as committee reports and communications. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is done. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bills and messages for appropriate committees. Please proceed.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading: House Bill 9448, Regulating the Use of Artificial Intelligence and Automation Systems in the Labor Industry. By Representative Ataidi.
To the Committee on Science and Technology:
House Bill 9449, Establishing a Framework for Film and Television Tourism in the Philippines, Creating an Interagency Committee on Film and Television Tourism. By Representative Ataidi.
To the Committee on Creative Industries:
House Bill 9450, Providing for the Revised Cooperative Code of the Philippines. By Representative Briones.
To the Committee on Cooperative Development:
House Bill 9451, Providing for the Revised National Policy on Nutrition and Dietetics. By Representative Fernandez.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 9452, Establishing the Philippine Blood Center. By Representative Salo.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 9453, Providing Healthcare Plan Coverage to Government Personnel. By Representative Rekto.
To the Committee on Health:
House Bill 9454, Amending the National Commission on Senior Citizens Act. By Representative Aquino Magsaysay.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens:
House Bill 9455, Creating Agricultural Pension Fund, Ensuring Social Security Benefits for Farmers and Fisher Folk. By Representative Aquino Magsaysay.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food:
House Bill 9456, Regulating Aviation Practices for the Protection of Passengers and Penalizing Acts in Violation thereof. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Transportation:
House Bill 9457, Ensuring Access to Public Education by Prohibiting the Denial of Enrollment, Withholding of School Records and Other Documents for Clearance Purposes in Public Schools for Non-Payment of Miscellaneous and Other Fees. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 9458, Establishing a Barangay Computer Center and Eye Library in all barangays. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Basic Education:
House Bill 9459, Providing Daycare Services for Children with Special Needs and Caring for Children with Special Needs Training Program in all barangays throughout the country. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children:
House Bill 9460, Granting Civil Service Eligibility to Professional, Temporary, Casual and Contractual Government Employees. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation:
House Bill 9461, Providing Protection and Benefits to Garbage Collectors and Garbage Truck Drivers. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Local Government:
House Bill 9462, Establishing Libinga ng mga Bayani Annex in Mindanao. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security:
House Bill 9463, Expanding the Education Pathway to a Nursing Profession. By Representative Suwan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 9464, Converting the Municipality of San Jose in the Province of Occidental Mendoza into a Component City to be known as the City of San Jose. By Representative Tariela.
To the Committee on Local Government:
House Bill 9465, Granting Free Funeral Services to Extremely Poor Families and 50% Discount from Funeral Services to Indigent Families Nationwide. By Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation:
House Bill 9466, Creating the Position of Barangay Nutrition Worker in Every Barangay. By Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Committee on Local Government:
House Bill 9467, Providing for the Lifetime Validity of PWD Identification Cards. By Representatives Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Irwin.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities:
House Bill 9497, Establishing de Maayon Test the Training and Assessment Center in Maayon, Capys. By Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education:
House Bill 9498, Establishing a Consular Office of the DFA in Roja City, Province of Capys. By Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs:
House Bill 9499, Institutionalizing de Pambansang Pabahay Para sa Pilipino Program. By Representative Kopilar.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development:
Resolutions: House Resolution 1436, Convening a Joint Congressional Commission on Health Systems to Review and Assess the Philippine Health System. By Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Health:
House Resolution 1437, Directing the Appropriate Committees of the House to Conduct an Inquiry on the Reported Inspection of a Warehouse in Valencia City, which led to the Discovery of 1.428 billion worth of allegedly illegal electronic cigarettes bearing the mark Flava. By Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1438, Directing the Appropriate House Committee to Conduct an Inquiry in the Proper Implementation of Section 10 of the Anti-Red Tape Act of 2007. By Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1439, Congratulating and Commending Ormooc City Homegrown Athletes: Princess Honey Arbilon, Shira Mae Aranzado, Joseph Godbout, Samuel Herman, Juliana Shane Sevilla, and Jess Lee Rayan Roman for winning in the UIPM 2023 Biathlith Triathlith World Championships held in Bali, Indonesia on November 1 to 5, 2023. By Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development:
House Resolution 1440, Congratulating the Gillas Pilipinas Men's Basketball Team for winning the Gold Medal at the 5x5 Men's Basketball Tournament during the 19th Asian Games held in China. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1441, Congratulating Ernest John EJ Obiana for winning the Gold Medal and setting an Asian Games Record at the Men's Pole Vault Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1442, Congratulating Annie Ramirez for winning the Gold Medal at the Women's 57-Kilogram Jiu-Jitsu Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1443, Directing the Committee on Transportation to Conduct an Inquiry on the Propriety and Legality of Impounding Motor Vehicles. By Representatives Bosita, Palma, Gutierrez, and Dagoo.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1444, Congratulating Margaret Meggy Ochoa for winning the Gold Medal at the Women's 48-Kilogram Jiu-Jitsu Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1445, Congratulating Arnel Mandal for winning the Silver Medal at the Men's Sanda 56-Kilogram Wushu Event at the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1446, Congratulating Boaster Yumir Marshall for winning the Silver Medal during the Men's 80-Kilogram Boxing Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1447, Congratulating Taekwondo Jean Patrick King Perez for winning the Bronze Medal during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1448, Congratulating Patrick Brenku for winning the Bronze Medal during the Men's BMX Racing Event in the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1449, Congratulating Sakura Alforte for winning the Bronze Medal at the Women's Individual Kata Event at the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1450, Congratulating Alex Iala and Francis Alcantara for winning the Bronze Medal at the Mixed Doubles Division of the Tennis Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1451, Congratulating Elreen Ando for winning the Bronze Medal at the 64-Kilogram Division of the Women's Weightlifting Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1452, Congratulating Alex Iala for winning the Bronze Medal at the Women's Singles Division of the Tennis Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1453, Congratulating Jones Inso for winning the Bronze Medal during the Wushu Men's Taiki Kuan and Taiji Juan Event in the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1454, Congratulating Gideon Fred Padua for winning the Bronze Medal at the Men's Sanda 60-Kilogram Wushu Event at the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1455, Congratulating Jenna Kailan Apolis for winning the Bronze Medal at the Women's 52-Kilogram Jiu-Jitsu Event during the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1456, Congratulating Clemente Tabugara Junior for winning the Bronze Medal during the Men's Sanda 65-Kilogram Wushu Event at the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
House Resolution 1457, Congratulating the Philippines Sepak Takraw Team for winning Bronze Medals at the Men's Regu and Men's Quadrant Sepak Takraw Events at the 19th Asian Games. By Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Rules:
Messages from the Senate: Message dated November 6, 2023 informing the House that uneven date the Senate passed Senate Bill 2426 in which it requests the concurrence of the House.
Committee on Trade Industry:
Message dated November 6, 2023 informing the House that the Senate uneven date passed House Bill numbers 606, 6688, 6694, and 7126 without amendment.
To the Committee on Rules:
Message dated November 8, 2023 informing the House that on November 7, 2023, the Senate designated Senators Robin Hood Padilla, Bato de la Rosa, Revilia Junior as additional conferees to the MyCamel Conference Committee on the Disagreement Professions of Senate Bill 2001 and House Bill 6510.
Committee on Rules:
Communications: Letter dated September 21, 2023 of the DOTR Undersecretary for Administration and Finance, submitting to the House of Representatives a copy of the Agency Action Plan and Status of Implementation as of August 31, 2023 on the COA Audit Observations and Recommendations for Calendar Year 2022.
Committee on Public Accounts:
Letter dated September 22, 2023 of the Presidential Advisor on Peace Reconciliation and Unity, informing the House that OPAP's financial report for the month of August 2023 was submitted to the Unified Reporting System and posted on their official website.
To the Committee on Rules, Appropriations, sorry.
Letter dated September 25, 2023 of the COA Chairperson, transmitting to the House a copy of their performance audit report on the Small Business Wage Subsidy Program.
To the Committee on Public Accounts:
Letter dated September 26, 2023 of the BIR Commissioner submitting to the House a copy of their report on tax collection of the Philippine offshore gaming operations from October 9, 2021 to October 31, 2023.
To the Committee on Ways and Means:
Various letters submitted by the local chief executives and officials regarding their fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the LGSF.
To the Committee on Appropriations:
Letter dated October 2, 2023 of the DND Secretary submitting to the House a copy of their 2022 Accomplishment Report.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security:
Letter dated October 2, 2023 of the Director, DOST Advanced Science and Technology Institute, submitting to the House copies of certain reports as of September 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations:
Letters dated October 6, 18, 19, 2023 of the BSP Bank Officer 6, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
To the Committee on Bank and Financial Intermediary:
Committee Reports: Committee Report Numbers 817 and 818 submitted by the Committees on Transportation, Appropriations, and House Bill Numbers 9468 and 9469 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 819 to 845 submitted by the Committees on Justice and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 9470 to 9496 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 846 and 847 submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture on House Bill Numbers 9500 and 9501. Committee Report Numbers 848 and 849 submitted by the Committees on Economic Affairs, Trade and Industry, Ways and Means and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 9504 and 9505. Committee Report Number 850 submitted by the Committee on Housing and Urban Development and Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 9506. Committee Report Number 851, 852, and 853 submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 9507, 9508, and 9509 respectively.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading: House Bill 9502 recognizing the property relations between gender-fluid couples who are cohabiting. By Representative Nograles Margarita.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations:
House Bill 9503, renaming the San Jose Bangadam Road traversing certain barangays in the municipalities of San Miguel and Santa Barbara, Province of Iloilo, as Congressman Arcadio H. Goriseta Avenue. By Representative Goriseta.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways:
House Bill 9510, requiring all food establishments to provide one-half cup of rice serving as a menu option. By Representative Tan Keith Maica.
To the Committee on Trade Industry:
House Bill 9511, mandating all commercial establishments serving food to the public to provide one-half cup of rice serving as a menu option. By Representative Briones.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry:
House Bill 9512, upgrading and creating additional positions in the office of the Government Corporate Council. By Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Trade Industry, Committee on Justice:
House Bill 9513, providing additional criterion for the availability of the unprogrammed appropriations. By Representatives Salceda.
To the Committee on Appropriations:
Resolution: House Resolution 1463, Resolution expressing the profound gratitude and appreciation of the House of Representatives to His Excellency President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Junior Romualdes Marcos Jr. for his invaluable support to the unity and integrity of this institution towards the realization of a common legislative agenda for a strong and prosperous nation, by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Gonzalez Aurelio, Dalipe Libanan, Romualdes Iada Mari, Asidre Puno, Barberz Duavit Albano, Yamsuan Pimentel, Garcia Albert, Tiano Aquino, Co Elizaldi, Villa Fertel Luis Raymond, and Madrona.
There is a motion to approve House Resolution, Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we acknowledge guests in the...
The guests of the Laguna Representatives, Honorable Anmatibag, Honorable Dan Fernandez, Honorable Jam Aragau, Honorable Ruth Hernandez, Honorable Len Alonte, Honorable Ambe Amante, and Representative Olivares of First District of Paranaque City. They are the barangay chairpersons of the First District of Laguna San Pedro City, together with their spouses and friends. They are... barangay Bagung Silang Talaga Chairman, Rainilynn R., barangay Kalindola Chairman, Dima Unahan J. Rodolfo B., barangay Crisantimung, Chairman Hernandez Jr. Institute Tupi, barangay Cuab Chairman Pastido Mario B., barangay Fatima Chairman Ordán Roberto U., barangay Chairman Rivera Samuel of barangay Langgam, barangay Chairman Pascal Biguelin B. of barangay Magzaisai, Chairman Doncilio Ernesto D. of barangay Nara, Chairman Matunog Edwencii of barangay Nueva, Chairman Santos Gary B. of barangay Pasita II, Chairman Labay Rexter S. of barangay Sampaguita, Chairman Inyon Junior Eugenio S. of barangay San Antonio, Chairman Bonoan Romeo B. of barangay San Lorenzo Ruiz, Chairman Larry Edward C. of barangay San Roque, and Chairman Baldumar Bernabe A. of barangay United Better Living, Cecilia Orduan, Ami Matunog, Reynaldo Talaga, Marisa Pascal, Jane Libarty Hernandez, Eden Lickmore, Norin Labay, Eduardo Enriquez, Emerson Coronel, Christian Ian Brabo, Carissa Inyon, Raymond Palacio, Jonathan Nala, Alfredo Bugtong, Cheryl Cuu, and Darlene Joyce Albayedah.
To the guests of Honorable... An Lourdes Jimatibag, welcome to the House of the People. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the guests of Congressman Yasir Alontobalindong and Congressman Ziya Alontobadyong, namely Saraminda Sarangani Balindong, wife of Kong Yasir Balindong, Attorney Pangailan Ali Macauro Balindong, former Deputy Speaker of the House of Representatives, and now Speaker of the Bangsa Mora Parliament, father of Kong Yasir Balindong, Jamila Alontobalindong, mother of Kong Yasir Balindong, Governor Mamintal Bombit Alontobadyong Jr., governor of Lanao del Sur, Mayor Alinador Maryam Balindong, mayor of Malabang, Lanao del Sur, board member Abdul Rashid Alontobalindong, Mrs. Maryam Mangomnang Balindong, Mr. Abdusalam Alontobalindong, Mr. Ansari Sumandar, ABC Chair Norodin Jethro Balindong Marohom, board member Frank Balindong Marohom, and Mr. Tala Balindong Lawan.
The guests of Honorable Congressman Balindong, welcome to the House of Representatives. My dear colleagues and members, may I invite you to watch the birthday messages of our beloved Speaker, Ferdinand Martin, Martin Gomez Romaldes.
Happy Birthday Speaker Martin Romaldes! Bata mo kame!
Happy Birthday Speaker Martin Romaldes!
We always look up to you as our mentor and leader. More power to you!
Happy Birthday!
Happy Birthday Speaker Martin! Andito kami paha sayo! God bless you!
Happy Birthday Speaker! Bata mo kame!
Well, what can I say? Happy Birthday to our Speaker, Speaker Martin Romaldes. There have been, I'm sure, very many greetings, so I will just add my own. And I will, of course, thank you for all the good work that you have done in leading the House of Representatives. And the very important part that the House of Representatives, under your leadership, has played in our effort of nation-building. And let's hope to keep that working relationship strong and vibrant. And I look forward to the years to come where we can do even more good work together. But on a more personal note, I'm sure that we will have a fine celebration on your birthday. And I am certain that, once more, you will continue to provide all of the goodies and treats that are making it difficult for us to keep our weight. But that is not a complaint. That is just a reminder that they are much appreciated. In any case, it's our turn to provide you with the treats on your birthday. Happy Birthday, Martin.
Happy Birthday, Mr. Speaker! Happy Birthday, Mr. Speaker! Session suspended!
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Certificate of Canvas of Votes and Proclamation of the Winning Candidate for the Position of Member, House of Representatives, First Congressional District of San Juan de del Norte, issued by the Special Provincial Board of Conversers Comelec, which proclaims the Honorable Roberto T. Uy Jr. as the winner in the 2022 National and Local Elections for the First District Representative of San Juan de del Norte. Mr. Speaker, in view of the aforementioned document, I move to allow the Honorable Roberto T. Uy Jr. Representative of the First District of San Juan de del Norte to take his oath in open session.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to call Representative Roberto T. Uy Jr. of the First District of San Juan de del Norte to take his oath of office before his body. May I request all members of the House of Representatives and all our guests in the galleries to please rise to witness the oath-taking of our new member. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Roberto Pimpin Uy Jr.
Of?
Of Pulanko San Juan de del Norte.
Having been elected as?
Having been elected as...
Representative of the First District of San Juan de del Norte?
Representative First District of San Juan de del Norte.
Hereby solemnly swear?
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully discharge?
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
The duties of my present position?
The duties of my present position.
And of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines?
And all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines?
That I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines?
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily?
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily?
Without mental reservation?
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome to the 19th Congress!
Mr. Speaker, in order to allow our members to meet and extend their greetings to the Honorable Roberto T. Uy Jr. of the First District of San Juan de del Norte, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended! Congratulations! Session resumed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, last November 7, 2023, the Honorable Yasir Alontobalindong of the Second District of Lanao del Sur was elected as Deputy Speaker. I move to allow Deputy Speaker-elect Balindong to take his oath.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. May we request the Honorable Deputy Speaker-elect Yasir Alontobalindong to proceed to the Rostrum with the members of his family for the oath-taking. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Yasir Alontobalindong.
Of?
The Second District of Lanao del Sur.
Having been elected as Deputy Speaker of the House of Representatives?
Having been elected as Deputy Speaker, House of Representatives?
Hereby solemnly swear?
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully discharge?
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
The duties of my present position and of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines?
The duties of my present possession and of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines?
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily?
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily?
Without mental reservation?
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
So help me God?
Help me Allah.
Congratulations! Welcome to the 19th Congress!
Mr. Speaker, in order to allow our members to extend their greetings to Deputy Speaker Yasir Alontobalindong, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended! Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, last November 7, 2023, the Honorable Antonio Tony Peti Albano of the First District of Isabela was elected as Deputy Speaker. I move to allow Deputy Speaker-elect Albano to take his oath.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. May we request the Honorable Deputy Speaker-elect Tony Peti Albano to proceed to the rostrum with the members of his family for the oath-taking. May I request the members of the House of Representatives and all the guests in our galleries to please rise to witness the oath-taking of our Deputy Speaker. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Antonio Tony Peti Taginod Albano.
Of thee?
Of the First District of the Province of Isabela.
Having been elected as?
Having been elected as.
Deputy Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Deputy Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my abilities.
The duties of my present position.
The duties of my present position.
And of all others, I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
And of all others, that I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will obey the laws, the legal orders, the decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in order to allow our members to extend their greetings to Deputy Speaker Antonio Tony Peti Albano, I move to suspend our session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Okay, session resume. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to acknowledge the guests of Representative Milagro Aquino Magcaysay of Senior Citizens Party List and Congressman Plato. As follows, Mr. Anton Nicolas Ignacio, the youngest Filipino World Champion of the Novus Runabout Stock Category at the recent 42nd International Jet Sports Boating Association World Finals recently held in Arizona, USA in October 2023. Mr. Paul Gerard Del Rosario, the World Champion of the Ski Mod Light Class at the recent 42nd International Jet Sports Boating Association World Finals recently held in Arizona last October 2023. Jet Sports Association of the Philippines President Harley David, Rollejo Ignacio, Bernardita Ignacio, Robert Ignacio, Joyce Ignacio, Kerry Del Rosario, Elizabeth Lee, and Ms. Michelle Padilla.
To the guests of our fellow members, to the guests of Congressman Magcaysay and Congressman Plato, welcome to the House of the People. Welcome po kahitito. Palangpapakamunadin.
Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the Privilege Hour.
Session suspended. Session resume. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, allow me to reiterate my prior motion to open the Privilege Hour.
There's no objection. The Chair stands. Motion is approved. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we recognize the Honorable Judas Sidri of Party List Tingog for his privileged speech.
Congressman Judas Sidri of Tingog Party List now recognized.
Honorable Speaker, distinguished colleagues in the August Chamber, honored guests, maupay niya kulupato niya tanan, magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. The 8th of November marks the 10th year of Typhoon Hayan, or locally known to us as Yulanda, which devastated the eastern Visayas region and its neighboring localities. The mention alone of the name Yulanda has etched in our memory the wrath that nature has unleashed to our beloved island province in Late and the trail of devastation, pain, loss, and destruction that it has left in its path. The strong winds hold and blew without mercy before the break of dawn on that even day, waking us up to the rising water both from the flooding and the tidal surges. Typhoon Yulanda left more than 7,000 people dead or missing, personal properties destroyed, crops and livestock damaged and dead, 6 million workers without means of earning, 4 million displaced, 1.1 million homes wrecked, 16 million lives ended and changed forever. The world watched in no one disbelief as images of devastation and the cries for help slowly revealed itself in individual images uploaded in social media and the news. Takloban was at the heart of this tempest, and my fellow Taklobanons bore the brunt of its fury. Colleagues, with deep humility, I urge you today to remember, remember the 8th of November. Honorable speakers and colleagues, 10 years since Yulanda, I stand before you this afternoon to share my reflections on the profound and important stories of resilience, solidarity, and compassion which came to light on that fateful day. A decade after Yulanda, we remember individual stories of grief and pain. We lost our homes, our loved ones, and more importantly, our sense of security. We were faced with a formidable task of rebuilding our lives from the ruins of the typhoon. While the work continues, I am proud to say that we took on the challenge with unwavering determination. We rolled up our sleeves and rebuilt our homes and infrastructures. Brick by brick, we restored hope to our community. Each passing day, stories of faith and hope fueled our people to continue with their livelihood and strengthened our resolve to rise from the ashes. Typhoon Yulanda may have tried to bury our city, yet here we stand today, truly an undeniable proof of the indomitable human and Filipino spirit. Every year, these stories are retold to honor our strength, resilience, and faith as a community. Amid the seemingly endless dark tunnel of despair we were in, we held on to our faith that life was still good and worth living, and soon enough, the darkness of the night would have to give way to the dawn of a new day. However, it was not just resilience that shone brightly in the wake of the storm. It was a heartwarming unity that emerged from every corner of our country and beyond. The solidarity that emerged from the ruins of Typhoon Yulanda was nothing short of remarkable. In the darkest hours of our lives, when the ferocious Typhoon Yulanda unleashed its unforgiving fury upon our coastal town, we found ourselves facing a force of nature that threatened to break our spirits and our resolve. In the midst of this chaos, our community stood united, bound by an unbreakable spirit of bayanihan. We clung to each other, seeking refuge in makeshift shelters, sharing whatever meager supplies we had left. Families huddled together, offering comfort and support as children wide-eyed with fear held on to their parents. In that hour of our greatest need, we found the strength we thought we had. Truly, it is darkest before the break of dawn. As the storm raged on, the true heroes emerged from the shadows. Neighbors became saviors, strangers became friends, and the lines that divided us vanished beneath the weight of our shared struggle. With bare hands and sheer determination, we cleared the debris, rescued those trapped, and offered solace to the injured. Days turned into weeks, and yet, and yes, the traces of Typhoon Yulanda cast along shadowy cloud over our lives. But we refused to yield. The spirit of resilience that ignited within us burned brightly. We were not just survivors. We were survivors who would rise again. Together, we rebuilt our shattered town. Our shared strength and unwavering spirit serve as a foundation upon which we laid our dreams and aspirations. We planted seeds of renewal in the soil of our community and watched them grow, nourished by the tears we shed and the determination we exhibited. Nations extended aid, organizations and individuals donated generously, and the Filipino spirit of bayanihan came alive as our fellow Filipinos from different parts of the world rushed to our aid. We are not, we were not alone in this struggle. The world stood with us, united in the face of a common tragedy. It was a testament to the boundless capacity for humanity and empathy. The outpouring of support from every corner of the globe was a powerful reminder that in times of crisis, humanity knows no borders. Through the tireless efforts of countless hands and the generous aid from around the world, we slowly recognized the aftermath of the typhoon transformed from a tragedy into a story of resilience and hope. Compassion was perhaps the most profound lesson that Typhoon Yulanda taught us. The compassion received from our fellow Filipinos and from the international community was an immense source of strength. But it was also the compassion we showed each other in the darkest hours of our lives. The story of individuals, ordinary individuals going to great lengths to help their neighbors, strangers sharing what little they had, and communities coming together to provide shelter and comfort were abundant. It was an evidence to the innate kindness and empathy that resides in the Filipino heart. In the midst of such devastation, we learned that compassion is the power to heal wounds, to bind communities, and to bring hope to the most desperate of circumstances. It was this compassion that helped us rebuild not only our physical infrastructure but also the social fabric of our communities. We have seen the birth of county initiatives aimed at creating a more resilient and compassionate society. These are the sparks of light that have emerged from the darkness of that day. Our wounds will heal one day, but the scars will remain. But instead of the tragedy and loss, these scars will remind us of the hard work that it took to be whole again, and that in our time of greatest need, we found the courage we never thought we had in us. Honorable Speaker, dear colleagues, we find ourselves once again facing an array of challenges, from natural disasters to public health crises and economic uncertainties. The lessons of Typhoon Yulanda remain as relevant as ever, serving as a guide as we navigate the trials of our present and future. First, as we look back on the lessons of resilience, we are reminded in the face, that in the face of adversity, we are capable of rising above and beyond our circumstances. We must therefore continue to build infrastructure that can withstand the forces of nature, invest in early warning devices, and educate our, educate our people about disaster preparedness. Resilience is not a one-time effort. It is a continuous journey. Second, we learn that solidarity is the cornerstone of a strong and united nation. As we come for the challenges of our time, we must remember that we are all in this together. Our regional, political, and ideological differences should not hinder our collective response to crises. We need to stand united with a shared purpose to address the complex issues that threaten our, our well-being. Third, we must bear in mind that compassion is a trait that we must continue to nurture in our society. It should not take a catastrophe to bring out our compassionate nature. We must cultivate a culture of empathy and care, reaching out to those who are marginalized and vulnerable in our society. Compassion is not a finite resource. It multiplies when shared. In the years that followed, as we rebuilt our homes and communities, we also rebuilt our sense of compassion. We witnessed countless acts of kindness and selflessness as we help our neighbors, share our resources, and lend a shoulder to those in despair. The compassion that flourished in the wake of Typhoon Yulanda transcended social barriers and economic divides, reminding us of the core values that define us as a people. Honorable Speaker, dear colleagues, in the ten years since Yulanda, we have made significant strides in disaster risk reduction, community resilience, and building back better. Our capabilities in disaster preparedness and response have evolved and grown, positioning our nation as a leader in resilience and disaster management. But we cannot rest on our laurels. Climate change continues to intensify, and new challenges emerge. We must remain vigilant and committed to the principles of resilience, solidarity, and compassion. Super Typhoon Yulanda served as a wake-up call, not only for the Philippines but for the world, highlighting the urgent need for better disaster preparedness, climate change mitigation measures, and the protection of internally displaced persons. But even as we have made progress in building a more resilient community, so much more has yet to be done. While Congress has already passed a law promoting the welfare of children in disaster and other emergency situations, and just recently, this House has passed the bill strengthening the protection of internally displaced persons. But we have yet to realize the creation of a dedicated government agency that will be primarily responsible for leading, managing, and organizing the national effort to reduce disaster risk, prepare for and respond to disasters, and recover, rehabilitate, and build back better after their occurrence. With the passage of this measure, we can look forward to the future with hope, knowing that government is ready and better equipped and committed to exert its best effort to protect lives and properties and to ensure that the tragedy that happened ten years ago will never happen again. Looking into the future ahead of us, the lessons of Typhoon Yulanda continue to guide us. As we confront the global challenges of a changing climate, a pandemic, and economic fluctuations, we must draw strength from our shared history. We have demonstrated the power of unity in the face of adversity. We have shown that hope and determination can overcome the darkest storms. We must remember that we have faced the strongest typhoon in recorded human history, and we emerge stronger, more united, and even more compassionate. Honorable speakers and colleagues, as we look back on this decade of recovery, we also remember the lives lost and the pain endured. Our scars, both physical and emotional, will forever remind us of the challenges we faced. We will always remember those who are no longer with us and honor their memory. The memory of those who perished in the storm serves as a reminder of the importance of our commitment to building a better and more resilient nation. We must honor them by continuing to learn, to adapt, and work together to ensure that no one will have to endure such a devastation again. We shall also forever hold a profound sense of gratitude in our hearts for the unsung heroes among our government, faith, community, and humanitarian leaders who toiled tirelessly in the shadows during the tempestuous fury of Typhoon Yulanda. One shining beacon and unwavering commitment and resolute leadership in those darkest hours was none other than the representative of the first district of Leyte, Speaker Martin Romualdes, who was always there for the people of Tacloban and Leyte before, during, and after Typhoon Hayan. It is of paramount importance that we acknowledge and shower a boundless appreciation upon these extraordinary leaders, who with unwavering diligence stood as examples of hope amid the chaos, providing comfort and consolation to the communities in their time of dire need. In closing, as we commemorate this tenth anniversary, let it serve as a reminder of our strength and resilience and the boundless potential of the human spirit, an enduring testament to the strength of our people. Typhoon Yulanda may have tested our nation, but it did not break, break our spirit. As we learn from our past and celebrate our present, let us look to the future with hope, courage, and unwavering determination. Colleagues, remember the eighth of November. Let the lessons of Typhoon Yulanda be etched in our hearts and minds as we face the challenges of our time, and may we emerge from them stronger and more united than ever before. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and to my fellow lawmakers for giving me the opportunity to share these reflections today. Once again, madamo nga salamat, maraming salamat po, mabuhay tayong lahat.
Thank you, Congressman Asidre. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of Donabol Asidre to the appropriate committee.
Is there any objection? The chair is done. Motion is approved. Floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the privilege hours.
Is there any objection? The chair is done. Motion is approved. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I now move that we take up resolutions under business for the day. I further move, Mr. Speaker, that we take up House Resolution 1463, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title, including the text of said resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair is done. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of House Resolution Number 1463. The title and the text, please, with Mr. Secretary General.
Resolution, House Resolution Number 1463. Resolution expressing the profound gratitude and appreciation of the House of Representatives to His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. for his invaluable support to the unity and integrity of this institution towards the realization of a common legislative agenda for a strong and prosperous nation. Whereas the three branches of our government were established by the Constitution, namely the Legislative, Executive, and Judicial Departments, all of which are constitutionally mandated to operate seamlessly and hand-in-hand with the purpose of delivering timely, efficient, and sufficient public service to the Filipino nation. Whereas His Excellency Ferdinand Bongbong Romualdes Marcos Jr., whose mandate as chief executive under the Constitution is to exercise executive power or to execute and enforce our laws to maintain and bring peace and prosperity to our nation, requires nothing less than the support and participation of all branches of government and its institution so that our government remains resilient and adapted, adapted to the pressing needs of all Filipinos. Whereas President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr., since his inauguration in June 2022, has unequivocally manifested his vision of a strong and prosperous nation through unity and inclusivity, stressing that his administration is fully committed to implementing sound and vital changes to the nation's policies to achieve economic recovery and improve the quality of life of Filipinos. Whereas the Legislative Department, specifically the House of Representatives, as holders of legislative power granted by the Constitution, tasked to pass all laws in response to the ever-changing needs of our countrymen, remains one with President Ferdinand Bongbong Romualdes Marcos Jr. in leading the Philippines to a brighter tomorrow. Whereas through the unfailing guidance and decisive leadership of President Marcos, the House of Representatives triumphantly accomplish its sworn duty to enact vital legislative measures and pursue the president's socioeconomic agenda and Sona priority measures, and instituted the needed reforms to boost the economy, create more jobs, and livelihood opportunities, and improve the living conditions of the Filipinos. Whereas the House of Representatives has already achieved unprecedented accomplishments halfway through its term, particularly in upholding the principles of integrity, transparency, and accountable governance, pursuing impressive economic growth, and lifting Filipinos from poverty, which were the result of the admirable synergy between the Legislative and Executive Branches, ensuring that both their priorities are aligned, strategic, and realistic. Whereas the solidarity and commendable working relationship exhibited by the House of Representatives with President Marcos reestablished public trust, improved public image, and reinvigorated domestic and international confidence to the House of Representatives, resulting to a renewed sense of passion and dedication not only among members but the personnel as well. Whereas the House of Representatives recognizes President Marcos's esteemed ability to steer and inspire this August Chamber to move forward as a, as a dynamic, efficient, and focused government arm upon which the entire Filipino nation rests its trust, hopes, and aspirations. Whereas cognizant of the need for other branches of government to work together in order to fulfill their respective constitutional mandates and to give respect to the trust and confidence placed in the members upon election to the office, the House of Representatives fervently calls on all institutions to continue showing their unequivocal support to His Excellency's leadership, programs, and directives so that finally, the Philippines shall rise again. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives to express its profound gratitude and appreciation to His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. for his invaluable support to the unity and integrity of this institution towards the realization of a common legislative agenda for a strong and prosperous nation. Adopted, Ferdinand Marcos G. Romualdes, Aurelio Dong G. Gonzalez Jr., Marcelino C. Libanan, Manuel Jose Manix M. Delipe, Jude A. Asidre, Yedamarike Romualdes, Roberto B. Puno, Robert H. C. Esbarbers, Michael John R. Duabit, Antonio Tony Pet T. Albano, Brian Raymond S. Riamsoon, Johnny T. Pimentel, Albert S. Garcia, Tobias Toby Tiyanko. Tobias Toby Tiyanko, Jose Joboy S. Aquino II, Elisa Aldico, Luis Raymond L. Ray Billy Puerto Jr., and Alejandro Jesús E. Madrona.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 1463.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1463. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, please say nay. The highest habit. House Resolution Number 1463 is been, has been adopted. Your leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I now move that we resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair is done, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Mujeev Hataman of the Lone District of Basilan for his privileged speech.
Congressman Mujeev Hataman is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Bismillah, rahmanir rahim, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wal barahat. Mr. Speaker, members of this August Chamber, mga kababayan, isang mapagpalyang araw sa ating lahat. I rise today to call for an immediate end to the violence currently unfolding in the Gaza Strip. Genocide ang nangyayari ngayon doon, Mr. Speaker. Walang ibang paraang ilarawan ito. And in the face of genocide, the only imperative is to stop the killing. The bombs and bullets must stop. Civilian must be protected, and aid must be allowed. No argument can justify the wholesale cruelty happening in Gaza right now. No argument can justify the shedding of the blood of innocent based on race or creed, or on their being where they are supposed to be, their land and their home. Ginagawang basihan ng Israel ang umanawipaglusob ng Hamas noong October 7, na ayon sa balita ay nasa isang libo at apat na raan ang nasawi. Ating mariing kinukundin na ito, Mr. Speaker. Dahil ayon sa Islam, mahigpit na ipinagbabawal ang pumatay ng mga inosente, lalo na't kung ang mga ito ay bata, kababaihan, at matatanda. Karapatan ng bawat bansa at mamamayan nito ang hustisya at siguridad, ngunit hindi sa paraang kinikitid din nito ang karapatan ng iba. Katulad ng napakarami ng pagkakataon, sa kasaysayan ng kaguluhan sa Israel at Palestine, hindi Hamas o Hezbollah ang pinapatay ngayon, Mr. Speaker. Sinisingil sa mga inosenteng sibilyan ang buhay na inutang ng ilan. Paano pangangatwiranan bilang self-defense ang pangbo-bomba ng mga mosque, paaralan, at ospital? Ang mga airstrike na walang kinikilala sa mga tinatamaan. Ayon mismo sa Director General ng World Health Organization, a child is killed on average every ten minutes in the Gaza Strip. Nowhere and no one is safe. Labing anim sa tatlumpotlimang ospital sa Gaza ang hindi na makapagbigay ng serbisyon medikal sa mga sugatan. May ilang pagamutan na din ang nagsasabing kapag naubos na ang crudo ng kanilang mga generators, hindi na nila alam ang gagawin sa mga pasyenteng nakaventilator, incubator, o gumagamit ng dialysis machine or life support. Ngayon, Mr. Speaker, patuloy ang pagtaas ng casualty counter ng sibilyan sa Gaza. Mahigit dalawang milyong tao doon. Sa huli kung nabasa na ulat, higit sa dalawamputpitong libo na ang sugatan. Higit sa labing isang libong palestino naman ang namatay, at araw-araw tumataas ang bilang na ito. Sa labing isang libong ito, ayon sa mga ulat, mahigit apat na libo na ang bata. At napakarami pang naghahanap ng paraang makatakas sa mga bombang bumabagsak sa mga gusaling. Karamihan ay sibilyan naman ang nakasilong. At paano tatakas o lilikas kung mismo ang buong Gaza Strip ay isang malaking kulungan, na mula pa noon ay kontrolado na ng Israel ang lahat ng lalabas at papasok dito? Kahit sa krisis na nagaganap ngayon, hinaharang ang pagkain, tubig, gamot, crudo, at lahat ng batayang pangangailangan. Uulitin ko po, Mr. Speaker. Higit dalawang milyong katao nasa malubhang panganib, nagaabang ng pagkain at tubig, at landas palabas sa digmaan. Mahigit dalawamputpitong libong sugatan. Mahigit na labing isang libong bangkay. Mahigit apat na libo sa kanila mga batang walang kamuwang-muang. Inuulit ko, Mr. Speaker. Genocide ito. Narinig natin ang talumpati ni United Nations Secretary-General Antonio Guterres sa UN Security Council noong nakaraang ikadalawamputapat ng oktubre. Idiniin niya, kung digmaan mang maituturing ito, wala pa ring dahilan para ipagpatuloy ang nangyayaring walang habas na karahasan. He called on the all parties to uphold and respect their obligations under the humanitarian law. Ipinaalala niya sa mga ospital at pasilidad ng UN, may halos naanim na daang libong palestinong nakikisilong. Dagdag pa niya tatlumpunglimang UN aid workers ang kabilang sa mga namatay. Wala silang ibang layunin doon kundi ang tumulong sa mga lumilikas. The protection of civilian is paramount in any armed conflict, anin niya. No party to armed conflict is above international humanitarian law. The United Nations General Assembly, voting 122 versus 14, with forty-five abstention last October 28, approved a non-binding resolution calling for a humanitarian truce in Gaza that hopefully will lead to cessation of hostility. Ang boto ng Pilipinas abstain. Nakakalungkot po ito, Mr. Speaker, na hindi man lang natin maipahiram ang tinig ng Pilipino upang manawagan ng kapayapaan sa Gaza. Natulungkot ako na habang hinuhukay ang mga sanggol mula sa gumuhong mga gusali, na iipit ang mundo sa iba't ibang debate. Totoo, mahalagang pag-usapan ang kasaysayan ng hidwaan doon. Mahalagang pag-usapan ng malalim na mga sugat ng nakaraan. Ang mga pogrom sa Europa na naging ugat ng kiluzang Zionists, at ng paninindigan nila na may sarili silang bayang Diyos mismo ang nagtatakda. Mahalagang intindihin ang idinulot na trauma ng Holocaust noong ikalawang digma ang pandaigdig. Sa kabilang banda, mahalagang balikan ang Valful Declaration noong 1917 ng nakaraang siglo kung kailan sinimulang nakawin ang mga lupain ng katutubong palestino. Ang mga pistok na walang pinatutunguhan, ang dekadang pagdurusang pinagdaanan ng mga taong, nagtatanong lang naman kung bakit sila pinalayas sa sarili nilang tahanan. Bilang bahagi ng isang etnikong komunidad na dumaan din sa pangapi at paniniil, mahirap tanggapin ang nakikita kong double standard dito, Mr. Speaker. No one is denying the atrocities done by Hamas during the Al-Aqsa flood operation last October 17. There is no debate that those responsible must be brought to justice. And sa akin lang, Mr. Speaker, mga kasama, dekada na binibilang ng araw-araw na pamamaslang pangpapahirap at paniniil sa karapatan ng mga palestino. Nasaan ang kondemnasyon? It leaves a bad taste in the mouth, Mr. Speaker, that so many in the West began screaming for justice after October 7. These same people struggled to find their throats and tanks in the decades prior as Palestinian land were stolen and Palestinian families were driven away, subjected to inhumane condition, and even slaughtered. We cannot seraphic who gets to have human rights, Mr. Speaker, at mga kasama. At ang totoo, Mr. Speaker, pwedeng itala ang lahat ng mga terrorist attack mula sa magkabilang panig sa habang kasaysayan ng hidwaan sa lupain palestino. Pwedeng magbabalik ang lahat ng istoryador sa pagtukoy kung sino ang nagsimula sa kaguluhan, kung bakit at paano tayo humantong sa puntong ito. Debate ito pwedeng ipagpatuloy hanggang bumaba ang kaluluwaan ni Abraham at pagbatiin ang mga anak niyang nag-aaway. But regardless of who wins the debate, Mr. Speaker, nothing can justify what is unfolding before our eyes. Uulitin ko, Mr. Speaker. May nangyayaring genocide at saksi tayong lahat dito. Namamatay ang mga sanggol, ang mga may sakit sa ospital, ang mga nakapila sa checkpoint na naghahanap ng paraang makalikas, ang mga matatandang hindi na makatakbo upang iwasan ang bumubulusok ng mga missile. Kaya nga, Mr. Speaker, noong nakaraang ikadalawamputtatlo ng oktubre, ay along with the Bangsa Moro Representatives filed House Resolution Number 1399 calling for the immediate cessation of violence between Israel and Hamas. Gusto kong idiin, Mr. Speaker, na hindi po ito laban sa bagitan ng mga hudyo at Muslim. I do not even see this is a conflict between Israelis and Palestinian. The first mistake we could make here is to conflate the acts on the powerful few with those of an entire people. The real conflict here is between those who would wield the power of arms over the armless, between those consumed by hate and those whose blood is shed due to such hatred, between those who see other humans as beings with rights and dignities and those who see them as animals to be sacrificed at the altar of political ends. At sa hidwaan ito, Mr. Speaker, mga kasama, malinaw kung saan ako nakatinding, at bitbit ko ang tinig ng aking mga kababayan sa Basilan, pati ang aking mga kalahi sa Bangsa Moro. Nasa panig kami ng karapatan ng katwiran, ng katarungan, ng kapayapaan, ng pagtigil sa karahasan. Nananawagan ako sa agarang pagtigil ng putukan, sa pagsunod ng lahat ng provision ng International Humanitarian Law, sa pagpapalawak ng mga landas upang makapasok ang ayuda para sa mga nagdurusang palestino at makalabas sa zone of conflict ang mga sibilyan. Nananawagan ako sa bawat kasapi ng ating samahan at sa kongresong ito na ipahiram ang kanilang tinig upang maabot ang pinakamahalagang layunin ang pagtigil ng patayan sa Gaza. Ilang larawan at video pa ba ang kailangan nating makita sa TV? Pahayagan at social media, Mr. Speaker. Nang mga batang walang ng buhay, nang mga ina, ama, na naghihinagpis habang karga-karga ang duguan at walang ng buhay nilang mga kaanak. Nang mga batang umiiyak na lamang at walang magawa habang pinapanood ang kanilang mga magulang, nabitiwan ang kanilang huling hininga. Gaano pa ba kadami ang bilang ng patay at sugatan? Ang kailangang maitala sa estatistiko. Ilang buhay pa ba ang kailangang sirain o kitilin sa Gaza? Samuli, Mr. Speaker, members of this House, what's happening in Gaza is genocide. It is a war crime. Tama na, sobra na. Kailangan nating itigil ito ngayon na. Yun lamang po, maraming maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat mga kasama sa kongreso. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wal barahat.
Dagang salamat. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of Representative Mujeev Hataman be referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The privileged speech of the Honorable Hataman is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the honorable gentleman from the Second District of Sultan Kudurat, Representative Horacio B. Swansing Jr. be recognized for his privileged speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The honorable gentleman is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, good afternoon. I rise before you today on a matter of personal and collective privileges to raise before this August Chamber recent events brought to my attention by concerned citizens from the municipality of Palimbang in the Second District of the province of Sultan Kudurat, who now appeal to us their duly elected representatives in the national government to swiftly condemn and reprehend through the full exercise of powers, roles, and duties bestowed on this body by the Constitution and other laws of the land. Comprised of forty barangays adjacent to the Celebes Sea and bordering the province of Saranggani, the municipality of Palimbang possesses a rich cultural history of which its people are most proud of. Palimbang's history spans from the progressive early communities built by descendants of tribal leaders and pizzeria folks from Palimbang, Indonesia, to its establishment as a full-pledged municipality and subsequent transfer from the province of Cotobate to the province of Sultan Kudurat in 1973. During its history, Palimbang has not been exempted from the periods of collective trauma. When speaking about Palimbang to non-resident development stakeholders, we in Sultan Kudurat still strive to steer focus away from images of the malisbong massacre, not to undermine the longstanding need to give justice to the victims, but to instead highlight to them the most radiant assets possessed by Palimbang, its natural and physical resources, and its people. From then until today, the citizens of Palimbang have relentlessly pursued to break away from the challenges presented by its past and by the volatile and uncertain political and economic circumstances of the present to look towards its future and aspire to bring the ideas of its best and brightest to life in order to finally build the progressive, resilient, and vibrant society they have dreamed of for so long. One proud and capable of utilizing its diversity, furiously equipped to withstand and conquer all adversity posed by the current and future day and age. The knowledge of how hopeful the people of Palimbang are now dreaming of such future for them and their children is what breaks my heart upon being informed of what happened to its citizens during and in the wake of the past 2023 barangay and sagunian kabataan elections last October 30, 2023. On the morning of October 30, 2023, my office was bombarded by calls from citizens of Palimbang who were in line to vote in their respective precincts, asking this representation to intervene in ongoing incidents of armed coercion and physical violence inside and within the vicinity of precincts across Palimbang. A volume of reports cited the simultaneous entry into the area of voting precincts of hundreds of men in white T-shirts with the word "Comilek Law Enforcers" printed on their backs. These men, who were reported to have claimed to be designated by Palimbang Mayor Junemi Capina, as these so-called "Comilek Law Enforcers", then began physically assaulting voters who, citizens reported, voted in favor of candidates allied to political parties opposing Mayor Capina. Individuals from Palimbang also identified the so-called "Comilek Law Enforcers" deployed in precincts as close relatives and supporters of candidates allied with Mayor Capina. In some barangays, citizens reported that individuals wearing "Comilek Law Enforcer" T-shirts are officials and employees of the Palimbang Local Government Unit, who, upon being asked why they were present in the voting precincts, claimed that they- claimed that they were designated election officers of Comilek in Palimbang. My office has also received reports, photo and video documentation of individuals affiliated with specific local candidates carrying firearms inside voting precincts and even parading their firearms while walking across voter lines. During these incidents, many citizens reported to have pleaded with members of the Palimbang Municipal Police Station to intervene. However, as the reported episodes of assault perpetrated by these so-called "Comilek Law Enforcers" ensued, photo and video documentation showed the grave inaction of the Palimbang Police Force who acted as if they did not see the incidents unfold. What is more alarming is the volume of reports from local citizens describing incidents where the Palimbang Police Force specifically Palimbang Municipal Police Station Chief, Police Major Joel Martinez, directly engaging in the physical restraint and assault of voters and poll watchers. Citizens of Palimbang have testified to my office that Police Major Joel Martinez punched poll watchers who attempted to follow ballot boxes being transported to the municipal hall for tallying, and that Major Martinez personally tore ballots cast by voters in precincts alongside Kadapi Capina, brother of Palimbang Mayor Johnny M. Capina. Chief of Police Martinez was also reported to have refused the resumption of voting in precincts of at least five barangays, citing the reason as Ayaw ni Mayor. Furthermore, Major Martinez was personally involved in the closure of votations in precincts of more than an hour before 3 o'clock PM, closing as provided by law, and was reported to have personally asserted ballot boxes from selected barangays to the Palimbang Municipal Hall for tallying without prior consent of the designated BEIs and without prior notice to the candidates. During the tallying of votes in the municipal hall, my office received complaints describing how LGU employees themselves physically restrained poll watchers from entering the municipal tally area, allowing a chosen few to enter the tally room. Local citizens and candidates alike protested in the presence of Mabaning Samama, the Executive Secretary of Mayor Capina, Kadapi Capina, the brother of Mayor Capina, and Marcos Badrudin, Mayor Capina's senior political adviser during the tally. We also received numerous reports of several ballot boxes being lost in transport from the barangay precincts to the municipal hall tally. These ballots, as described, were transported through vehicles under the care of the Palimbang Local Government Unit. Mr. Speaker, I have not ever mentioned incident of coercion and violence which occurred during the period of the filing of candidacies for the 2023 barangay and sangunian kabataan elections as reported to my office. I hope to present these incidents to this chamber if it would allow in due time in the proper forum as determined by Congress, along with the list of names of the identified persons who allegedly have committed clear criminal offenses under the revised Penal Code and the Omnibus Election Code of the Philippines, by claiming to be duly designated officers of the Commission of Elections while perpetrating act of physical intimidation, violence, and armed coercion during the conduct of the barangay and sangunian kabataan election in the municipality of Palimbang. Mr. Speaker, I stand today to shed light to these reported incidents with heavy heart. I know that this speech may undermine years and decades of work, not just by me and my office, but by generations upon generations of Palimbang genius to steer the image of our beloved town away from images of armed men in guns harassing its own citizens and harassing each other, from images of men in power asserting their self-interest through force and intimidation, the blatant disregard for the basic rights of ordinary citizens and utter disrespect of our punitive laws. However, in the light of these reports, I could not, in my gold conscience, stand back and not speak on behalf of these brave citizens who have rendered voiceless by the institutions and persons who have been tasked by our government, by our social contracts, to empower and protect, protect them. During my conversation with the groups of individuals who came forward with these reports days after the barangay elections, they always concluded, "Our audiences in the same way." Wala na kong, kung hindi katatayo, kung hindi mo sasabihin sa kongreso ang pinaggagawa nila sa amin, tatawa-tawa na naman sila sa munisipyo. Hintayin na lang namin na may kumatok sa pintuan namin hanggang kailan kami mawawalan ng karapatan. Is if these reports are true, we, the sentinels of our democracy, have a duty to not let their voices fade. We have a duty to not let their acts of courage be the subject of mockery and insults. We cannot let these individuals of authority speak in the face of the law and our public institutions. We cannot allow the people of Palimbang, who are still desperately holding onto the hope that one day their government will finally cast the swift and firm hand of justice down on those who now oppress them and will persist on trapping generations upon generations of Palimbang genius in fear, terror, and poverty. Believe that there is no hope past the reality they face now. Hindi tayo papayag na sa kahuli-hulihan, 'yung mga umaasa na dadating din ang araw na tulad ng kapwa nilang Pilipino, maging malaya ding magsalita, makaboto, magsabi ng hinahing, magpahiwatig ng ideya, paniwala at tunay na hangarin na walang takot ang mga taga-Palimbang. Ay maniniwala rin na talaga hindi dadating ang araw na lalaya sila. In light of these reports, in pursuit of upholding and safeguarding the integrity of our electoral processes and to deter all individuals, particularly persons of authority from actions of such nature, we providing when necessary with a punitive punishment commensurate to the offenses they have committed, I ask this honorable body, the House of Representatives, to summon the individual mentioned and all other individuals as it may deem fit and investigate in aid of legislation the incidents of fraud, usurpation of authority, violence, armed coercion, threat, and intimidation during the conduct of the past barangay and sangunian elections in Palimbang. In doing so, we hope to demonstrate to our citizens, particularly those demoralized by the reported events in Palimbang, that the national government will not dismiss nor endorse through its inactions such incidents and offenses. That this government will assure the rights of citizens from our economic centers to our nation's borders with the same expedient and yielding force and will exercise, exploit, the fullest extent of the powers in protecting our basic democratic practices. I hope for this chamber's unwavering commitment to our founding principles of good governance and accountability through the swift commencement of this investigation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Magandang gabi po sa inyong lahat.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of Honorable Horacio Pizjuan Singh Jr. be referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The privileged speech of the Honorable Swan Singh is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the business for the day, I move for the consideration of House Resolution Number 1390 in that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said resolution.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the House Resolution Number 1390.
House Resolution 1390, Resolution Creating an Ad-Hoc Committee to ask to conduct, task to conduct and study the construction of a new House of Representatives building and the relocation of the House of Representatives there too.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for adoption of House Resolution Number 1390. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1390. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 1390 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the adoption of House Resolution Number 1390, I move for the creation of the Ad-Hoc Committee on the relocation of the House of Representatives complex and with its jurisdiction as follows: All matters directly and principally relating to the relocation of the House of Representatives complex, including the conduct and study of the construction of a new House of Representatives building.
There is a motion to create the Ad-Hoc Committee on the relocation of the House of Representatives complex. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the creation of the Ad-Hoc Committee on the relocation of the House of Representatives complex, I move that we elect the following as members of the said Ad-Hoc Committee: As Chairperson, Representative Luis Raymond L. Rabello Verte Jr. As Vice Chairpersons, Representative Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr., Representative David J. J. Suarez, Representative Robert S. S. Barbers. As Members, Representative Mercedes K. Alvarez, Representative Roberto B. Puno, Representative Janet T. Pimentel, Representative Josep Joboy Esacino II, Representative Alejandro Jesus Madrona, Representative Angelica Natasha Co., Representative Brian Raymond Yam Swan, Representative Tobias Tobir M. Janko, and Representative Jordine Jesus M. Romualdo. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to elect the aforementioned members of the Ad-Hoc Committee on the Relocation of the House of Representatives Complex. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The members so mentioned are elected as Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, and Members of the said Ad-Hoc Committee. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until 3:00 PM of November 14, 2023.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Session is adjourned until tomorrow, November 14 at 3:00 PM.